Good evening. The Northwest Vegas City Council welcomes you to its city council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance where you entered and on the podium rail here to my left. Please give the card to the city clerk, she sits right here, and when I call up, and she'll hand it to us up here, and when I call upon you, we ask that you limit your, when you come to speak, that you limit your comments no more than three minutes and that we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the about open to meeting law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance.
Thank you. Tonight, with the opportunity to have an invocation, we're giving one of, you're probably not supposed to have favorites, but Pastor Ty Neil from Grace Point Church is such a wonderful church that does so much for us, and volunteer service is here to lead us in invocation. And then we'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Braden Braceno, and I'll tell you a little bit more of him after the pledge. Please rise.
Let us pray. Father, we must first come to you with thanks. Thank you for all the grace you have given us in our lives. Life itself is a gift from you. Thank you also for the unique purpose you have bestowed on each and of us today and the ability to complete the task at hand. Also, thank you for freedom. Freedom is a costly matter, so thank you for the many who paid the price for us to gather freely. Thank you for the love you have freely given to each of us, no matter race, gender, ethnicity, or religion. God, your word instructs us to pray for our leaders. The Apostle Paul writes, "I urge that supplication, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet, godly, and dignified life in every way." So we pray for our president, our governors, and officials nationally. We pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, specifically this assembled council here. God, would you grant them the wisdom beyond their experience and age? Please give them a thirst for hunger, justice, equality, righteousness, and peace. I pray, Father, that you would give them a unique ability to be united in task and goal while celebrating the diversity within this community. And, Father, I pray for protection and blessing over their lives and the lives of their families. We also lift up the least of these within our community. As we use our uniqueness together, may others flourish and communities be renewed. May we see ourselves accountable for those without hope, without means to provide for themselves, without a voice, without family, and without a community that cares. And, Father, as Jesus taught us to pray, "Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Your kingdom come; yours will be done in North Las Vegas as it is in heaven." God, please bless our time together. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, prioritie, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ty. We appreciate that prayer. And also, just to let you know about Braden, he's in the 4th grade at Hecathorne Elementary School. He is our Teamsters representative leader, Teamsters 14 Larry Grippa's grandson. Larry, thank you for bringing your family to council meeting this evening, and he seems like he might be a promising potential for mayor someday. So I enjoyed the interview with him and looking forward to seeing him mature and become a mayor someday. Moving on to council items. Councilman Barone.
Mayor, we do have the presentation first.
Oh, wait. We have a special guest in the audience today. I'm so sorry. Chief Perez, we have Mr. Former Mayor Mike Montandon, and we're going to show him some support for what he did for you and for what we tried to accomplish at Christmas. So, Mr. Montana, I'm so sorry, please come forward.
First of all, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for being here to receive this award, and thank you for chairing the effort in support of our Shop with the Cop program this year. It was an incredible success due to your leadership in that way, and it was very much appreciated. We present to you and to the Insight Park Highlands LLC a plaque of appreciation from the Police Department and the City of North Las Vegas, and it reads, "In appreciation of your most generous support this holiday season, your kindness has helped to make a Merry Christmas for the kids and families of our great community. Thank you, North Las Vegas Police Department, Shop with the Cop 2017."
I might step in here, Chief. This is something that you should do for this wonderful man, former mayor. It was previous to this, many conversations with the police chief, I would say, if you can, if you ever need my help, let me know. That's why I'm here, I'm here to support you. And they came in and said, "We don't have money for Shop for the Cop this year." Shop for the Cop, and they go to Target and they bring worthy families, a candlelighter children, and all that, and we needed to raise some money. And so, I asked Chief if he would continue to work, and then I would reach out, and I reached out to the city council, and we all donated $2,500 each, and then Mayor Montana got involved. This had been something that was very important to him when he was mayor, and he loved it. And I called him, I said, "Mike, this thing can't fail. I mean, can you carry on? Can you come back to do a little public service with us?" So Mike went out there and actually wrote a huge check of his own for over $10,000, and then he picked up some other money from other people, and today Shop with the Cop is pretty much funded for another year or so. But that said, Mike is now the chairman of Shop with the Cop. So as Mike looks around here and smiles at you, he's actually taking your names down because he knows you love children and you want to do good in this community. So I wanted to thank you for the over $25,000 that you were able to help, and I hope that next year we can continue to help the chief and move forward with our community efforts at Christmas time. So I'm going to let everybody else talk first real quick. Mike, Richard?
Thank you, Mayor, and I had the privilege of attending this year. I don't normally get up that early, but I made a point of getting up that early this time, and it was an amazing event with the scene of children's eyes and having all our police over there. So, thank you all, all of our police officers, and Mayor Mike, thanks for stepping in and helping us out on that. Really appreciate it.
No, I just wanted to thank, of course, you know, our police chief and our former mayor for stepping up, and of course, all the rest of the men and women from your police force, who, again, are leaders in the community. I'm sorry I couldn't make it this year, but I'll definitely be there next year, and thank you so very much for everybody's combined effort.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Montandon, this is the second year that I've, second or third year that I've got to participate, and there's no greater joy than to see a child's face when they are allowed to zoom through Target and pick pretty much whatever they want. So how exciting is that? My fondest memory is one of the little ones told me, even though I'm here shopping for myself, I'm going to make sure that my family has things, my brother and my sister, so that just kind of melted my heart, that they were so very selfless in thinking about other people as well. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you, Chief Perez and Mayor Mike. It was my first opportunity to not just watch it on the news, but see it firsthand, and to see the generosity and the excitement and joy that was there was amazing, and I think the police officers enjoy it almost as much as the kids do. I talked to a few officers that said they've been coming for 14 to 20 years consecutively and something that they look forward to, so I think it's an amazing tradition to continue.
I do. I very much appreciate being here tonight, and I want to say the plaque says for my leadership on this, but I want to say what you see here is leadership. I'm just definitely following in this one. Mayor Lee provided the leadership and the cattle prod to keep me going. It was really exciting, and like Pamela says, I'm sorry, Councilwoman says, you know, to see some of the little kids and their comments, you know, you bring them out a really nice jacket, and they look up with big eyes and say, "I was hoping for socks and underwear." You know, and it just, it really is exciting to be part of the community involved in that. And so I brought one of my scouts who's working on his citizenship in the community with me, just so he could kind of hopefully catch the fire a little bit, too. Really appreciate all you do. Thanks, Chief.
We're going to present, and then I have a couple of words before we get moving. I also want to take this moment, Mayor, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. It meant the world to us and the success of the program. I also want to personally thank the mayor and our Mayor Protam, our council members for all their support. They were very generous. The mayor kind of skimmed over it that they contributed and they were helpful in the cause, but they were very generous, and take my word for it, in what they gave to this program. So, from me, bottom of my heart, and the police department, and all the kids and families that we affected this Christmas, thank you so very much, and God bless you always.
Now I'm back on track here. Moving on to council items. Councilman Barone.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you very much. I just wanted to recognize, of course, I'm all about the art, Mayor, and people were coming in, they might have noticed the art display outside. I am so sorry, I am remiss in mentioning the name of the teacher, but most definitely by next councilman, I'll have the name of the teacher, but I want you to please admire the work by our junior artists here in the community, a fine school in our community, the 100 Academy, their students who provided the artwork that decorates our foyer there, our stone soup art gallery.
Thank you, Councilman Churchill, Mayor Protam Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to briefly mention, probably this Friday, we're going to have our, lack of a better word, coming soon sign placed up at Craig Ranch Regional Park. It'll be in the back area by the gardens, and the coming soon sign will be our council-approved Veterans and Military and First Responder Memorial that we'll be fundraising for very shortly now. We would appreciate, once you get the call or want to participate in some fashion, to help us build this tribute to our military and to our first responders, we would very much appreciate it. So, take a run out there. I know China Lights are going to be out there for a while, and it's going to be right by their setup in the back, so we would appreciate your support as we go forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Goinz Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of things happened last week. On last week, Tuesday, the 9th, Mayor Protam Churchill and I attended the ceremony that honored falling officer Detective Chad Parquet that was held at the North Las Vegas Justice Court. During the ceremony, Chris Lee, Judge Kalani Hu, Judge Natalie Tyrell, they unveiled a memorial plaque that honored Detective Chad Parquet inside the Justice Court. On hand were Clark County Commissioner Lawrence Wheatley and Assemblywoman Danielle Monroe Moreno, and they spoke and expressed their thanks to Detective Parquet's family for allowing them to be able to honor him. And then after the remarks, everyone went outside, and there was a special ceremony where they released dozens of white doves to honor him as well. And so I'd just like to give out a huge thank you to everyone for their love and support for the department and for Detective Parquet's family. It was a very moving ceremony. And last week, again, I was honored to speak at the President's Council Business Chamber, so it's called the President's Council Executive Leadership. They had a retreat here in Las Vegas, and there are, I spoke to them about the great work that the African-American community is doing throughout the valley, and just to update them on what goes on in our city, because they are based out of Cleveland, Ohio, and so they were very impressed with the work that's happening here in Las Vegas in the African-American community and the community as a whole. Also, on Saturday, just a special thanks to go out to Leon Lettsam, Rick Damian, and Janie Christensen for all their hard work with our annual CAC bus tour. And what we do is, we tour various nonprofit agencies throughout the city of Las Vegas and mainly in North Las Vegas, and they are vying for community development block grant funds. So we spent the whole day talking to great community agencies that are here in our valley that are vying for those funds. And lastly, really exciting this year, I got to be a judge in the Martin Luther King Parade. There were over 126 entries. It was a fabulous parade, and each year it just gets better and better and better. Last thing, super great, if it's happening, we have a saying, "It's happening in Ward Two." We had a great ribbon cutting with the new residential development called Desert Mesa, which is right there on Cary and Commerce, and they are building 126 single-family homes for both single-story and two-story, and to my knowledge, I think they're like on phase five maybe, because their houses are selling so, and if you get a chance to go over there and look at them, they are beautiful homes, so it's going to be a great new community for our city. That's it. Thank you.
That's a very good report, Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor. I also had the privilege of participating in the Martin Luther King Junior Parade on Saturday. I was really blown away at the energy and excitement during the parade, and the sense of community was awe-inspiring. I do owe an apology to Chief Calhoun and Captain Williams because I gave away almost all the cool little fire hats in the first eighth of a mile of the parade. I got caught up and didn't make the hats last throughout the parade, so they said I can come back and try again next year.
And tell what you had to be corrected about.
Oh, and also, I was throwing things off the top of the fire truck. Also, no, no. Anyway, I'll do better next year, I promise. When I say throwing things, they were things that were for the kids, you know, hats and things like that, not projectiles. Also, this is on a very serious note, we need volunteers on the 24th of January to help with our homeless census in Southern Nevada. If you have the time and are interested, you can go to signup.com and look for Southern Nevada Homeless Census. The time slot would be from 9:00 PM to 4:00 AM. I'll be participating with some of our staff at the Walnut Recreation Center. It's critically important to know who these folks are, where they live, and what their specific needs are in order for us as a community to reach out and help these folks that are without shelter. So if you want to participate, if you don't want to stay up all night, you can also help with the youth count on the 25th in the morning. Lastly, we have an amazing event coming to our community at the Craig Ranch Regional Park. It's China Lights, opens on the 19th, which is this Friday, and it goes to the 25th of February. There are 100 or 40 different displays, thousands and thousands of LED lights. These came all the way from China in 20 different containers to the US. It's a traveling exhibit, and we're one of the fortunate communities to have it here. So I encourage you to take your family to go check it out and to tell a friend. Thank you, Mayor.
Pardon me. Thank you very much. Great reports, everyone. This is a time set aside for the first public forum on any posted agenda item. Remember, no council action may be taken upon any matter raised under public comment. I recognize we have some blue cards, some say first public forum, and then others say, on the same thing, say item 14. If you want to speak on the issue, item 14, then I'll just wait till you give your presentation then, okay? But anybody else who would like to speak on maybe a non-agenda item or an agenda item other than that, please come forward, and we'll listen to you now. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Item 1, approve city council regular meeting agenda of January 17, 2018 for possible action.
Mayor and council, there have been several changes to tonight's agenda. The applicant for item 3 and 4 has requested that these be continued until the February 21st meeting, and the applicant for item 15 requests to be withdrawn, and staff recommends that item 13 and 18 also be withdrawn.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to set future public hearing dates.
Item 2, set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings from the City Planning Commission meetings.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I so do you. You set any dates as necessary.
Mayor so noted. Again, for the viewing audience, the public hearings, item 3 and 4, were continued to February 21st.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items 5 through 7, and staff recommends to approve as presented.
Thank you, council. Any comments, questions? If not, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to business.
Item 8, review and select new ambulance franchisee for the city of North Las Vegas scheduled to begin February 1, 2018, and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the select the ambulance franchise agreement in a form approved by the city attorney's office.
Thank you. Is there a presentation or anything being going to be presented on this? Anybody speaking on this? Staff? So at this point in time, we'll close the public comment and discuss, as a council, this issue. Does anybody like to bring anything up before we vote on this?
Yeah. I was a little bit under an impression that we'd be getting a presentation from the applicant, well, the parties. Are they going to be coming forward and saying anything on their behalf?
I believe that Chief Calhoun was going to do just a brief summary of kind of the process that we went through. I'm not sure.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So the, as you may be aware, this process started, well, several months, even actually before I came here as the fire chief. Staff at the fire department, especially our EMS division and Assistant Chief Anderson, started working to get put together a franchise agreement, a base franchise agreement that we would like to see as the fire department, based off of some of the best cases from all the other franchise agreements in the valley. Those agreements were put together. We began to go through the process, and throughout the process, we ended up sitting down with Medic West and with Community Ambulance Service. We used our baseline agreement as what we wanted to see from the fire department and for the city of North Las Vegas, and then gave it up to them to decide what they felt like they were able to do or accomplish as an organization. We did have meetings with each of them individually to try and answer some questions so that they kind of understood what we were looking for, and then offered a date of January 4th for them to turn in their last and best offers. And what you have attached to the agenda today are what both of those organizations have offered or are willing to offer as the franchisee for the city. So, as I've kind of explained to some before, probably the biggest differences in the two agreements that you have there, the fee structure and the fine structure are both relatively the same. Neither agency changed that. The response times are the same, but I would say, I'm not sure you're aware, and I don't think we talked about this in briefing, the response times are back to an all-time low that were previously held in the valley. Nobody else has the eight minutes and 59-second response time that we have in this, and both agencies have agreed to that, which is good for our patience and good for our transport times. Probably the biggest difference that you'd see there is, AMR, Medic West, has indicated that they are able to honor this contract, sign on to this contract immediately February 1st. Community Ambulance Service has told us in meetings that they're potentially going to ramp up their personnel and have their vehicles and everything. They left the dates open on the franchise agreement that they sent in, so we were looking at about a three-month timeframe for that to go active with their agreement. And then the only other big difference is Medic West had requested or asked in their last best for an exclusive franchise agreement for emergency and non-emergency, and Community had submitted a request from our original request that it was a non-exclusive agreement. So other than that, those are probably the biggest differences, or maybe some other language differences in there, but as far as the base of the contract and the protections that we have as a city and as a fire department are the same.
Thank you. Councilman, would you, I just saw two hands on this side. I don't need to go to this side.
Yeah. Well, just a few, so I just want to make a few things clear. So, the potential franchisees, to get this correct, they're reducing the response times, correct?
Correct. For our higher acuity calls. The other ones remain the same, but for our Charlies and Deltas, which are higher acuity, worse patients, it's lower, yes.
Fantastic. There are also penalties, of course, if they do not make these, correct?
Correct, and there are penalties that are pretty commensurate with other ones that are going on in the valley right now and better than the penalties that we have in the previous contract.
No, as I understand, to help out with the transparency and accountability, there's also a GPS tracking device, right, that will help monitor these, right?
Yeah, there is automatic vehicle location. The other thing that we've discussed with both of the agencies is that we are going to be using, it's part of the franchise fee. Number one, we will be getting a compliance person that's going to help with education and compliance within the fire department through our EMS, that's going to help maintain that compliance. Another component of that, too, aside from that, is that, you know, with either organization, we've discussed that we need to have a good working relationship aside from the contract. But the other thing, too, is there is a software mechanism that allows us to make sure that we can track compliance and make sure that compliance is maintained, and if not, then the penalties and fees will be enacted if those times or the contract details are not met.
Chief, as I understand, also, we're having a slightly different way of the franchisee. They're actually paying per ride, correct?
Yeah.
Which would actually potentially be much more than what we're getting in the franchise fee before. Is that also correct?
Yeah. What we did to make it a fair franchisee is based off of what is the cost of doing business on our end, and we've basically asked the franchisee to help us bear that cost. And so those fees were based off of three things. The three things were the cost that we pay for dispatching, which obviously, for them to get the calls as well, the 911 calls are coming through our dispatch center, so part of those fees go to help pay at the fire alarm office to pay for dispatching. The other component is paying for half of our compliance person, and then for paying for the compliance software to help to maintain that compliance. And so, we figured out those numbers based off of a per incident fee, and so if they take more calls and we as a fire department take less calls and transport less people, their fees would go up. But if we decided that we wanted to be more active in EMS and transport and go on more calls than our franchisee, they would have to pay less, so we felt it was more fair that way, and both have agreed to those same terms.
Fantastic. There's a couple more things. Is there also a clause that will, of course, you know, this is a good five-year agreement. Is there anything that will allow for some inflation if there are unforeseen costs?
Yeah, the franchise fee in the proposed agreements that you guys have is $17 per incident and a 2% annual, I don't want to refer to, I guess, as a code, but a 2% increase each year on that to raise per, you know, the costs that we may incur or the costs that may go up over the period of that contract.
Thank you, Chief. So, to keep it shorter, I guess, I should say this. So we're getting increased service, higher franchise fees, better response times? Wow. I almost, I hate to ask, what's the catch?
There's no catch. Teamwork. We had some good teamwork here. We were able to. I was fortunate to come in with a group that obviously has had some experience in this, my staff at the fire department. I was able to bring in a fresh set of eyes, you know, is not having to had to work with any of these agencies before, so we had some great discussions. We locked ourselves in some offices on several days and combed through everything to make sure that we were getting the best thing for our, number one, our citizens, and then number two, for our city and our fire department.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you being prepared for all my questions, too.
Thank you.
Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilman Barone. You saved me a lot of questions there, so I'll be even more brief. I haven't had the opportunity, so let me first thank both of the applicants for submitting their request to represent our residents over here on transports and medical services. I haven't had the opportunity, or no one from community has contacted me, so I don't know, are they in the chambers tonight? Medic West, and I'll speak from my heart, Medic West has always been a good community partner to the city. What was very important to me, aside from all of the questions that Councilman Barone had posed to Chief Calhoun, what was also very important to me was that the city, the transport company, and our firefighters and our fire department have a very good understanding and working relationship. That's important to me from the perspective of an employee here, but it's also important to me from the perspective of someone who represents a growth area like myself and Councilman Black, Ward 4 and Ward 3. That's where the challenge has That's where the challenge had been in the past, to make sure that we get services out to those people over there when they need it. Going over the proposed agreement from AMR Medic West, it looks like we cover all of those bases. And what I also like about the fact of Medic West, their history with the city, they're based over here in Delhi. They have a large, how would you say, fleet of ambulances and resources, and I think that was pretty evident when we had the shooting October 1st. They've always been to the table when we needed them. So I'm very comfortable with their proposal, and I appreciate all the time that both Medic West and Community Services, Community Ambulance, I'm sorry, you know, put in for the city. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Black? I just wanted to say that I'm very impressed with the agencies that came forward and gave their proposals, and for them to step out and increase the service levels at such a significant rate from 1159 to 859 for these critical patients is a great benefit to our residents, and it's very impressive. And not only that, the fact that they're splitting the reporting into zones, so it's a real accurate representation of what's going on throughout the city, and there's continuity in service level throughout the city. So I wanted to commend both agencies for making that stretch. What that tells me is that they see North Las Vegas as a great partner and someone that they want to do business with long-term and ultimately serve our residents, which is what we're here to do. I just wanted to clarify or make sure I'm understanding one thing. With the current franchise agreement that expired December 31, there was entire exclusivity. With the new one, at least on the Medic West side, if I understand correctly, there's exclusivity with emergency and non-emergency calls, but for special events, do I understand correctly that that is open to the competitive market, meaning if I want to rent a park and I need ambulance services, I have a choice now? I'm not captive to one carrier. Is that true?
Yeah, so the discussions we had with them, they were willing, we had said that, you know, we'd had some issues in the past and that they were willing to leave that non-exclusive. We were going to work with the City Attorney's Office to set kind of a scale for, to make it even playing field for the ambulance services that may provide event EMS service. But yes, they were willing to offer that as a non-exclusive partner, or partner to us, so that other ambulance agencies could fill in if they weren't available, or if an organization wanted to use another ambulance service, for example, at Craig Branch Park in an event there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilwoman?
Chief, thank you very much. Just having done a ride-along with the ambulance team, it's just amazing to see the work that these young men and women do, and to me, the response time was really great then, and you know me, I'm just, it's always patient first, what's best for our citizens. And so with this new agreement, with better response time and this compliance software, are you able to somehow track data with the zones so that it's equitable, you know, it's equitable throughout the whole entire valley?
Yes, ma'am.
City of North Las Vegas.
And I'm glad Councilman Black started the conversation on that. That was one of the things that, when I came in, and one of our biggest concerns is that, yes, we were, the current, under the current terms of the franchise agreement, our franchisee was meeting the requirements, but those requirements weren't getting evenly met throughout the city. And again, they were compliant, but that was a concern for us because not all of our residents were getting met evenly throughout the city. And that happens a lot with, you know, density of population and where the higher call volume is, but one of our concerns is that all of our citizens were having a fairly equal response time, and that's when we had put the suggestion forward about maintaining compliance in not only, in the north and the south zones of the city like Councilman Black alluded to, and in the end, we think, and again, both have, in their responses have agreed to that, because I think that they also agree, too, that we need to maintain our, you know, be on the top of our game in all areas of the city. So it is going to truly be a huge benefit to everybody and for our crews if we aren't transporting those patients for the time that our crews are out of service waiting for a transport ambulance there to transport the patients. So several ancillary benefits from this.
I just have one question. Considering the audit, in the past, I don't know that we were auditing exactly what was going on or to the degree that's now been promised. How do you foresee the audit process? How do you make sure that the contract is being upheld?
As far as the compliance with the franchise agreement?
Yeah.
This software that I spoke of basically ties in with the CAD system where all the times are reported and everything is reported, and it's basically, we can pull information up to the minute, put in the compliance that's required in our franchise agreement, and it's going to help us to ensure that compliance is maintained, and if any penalties or fines are needed to be put in place because of something that was dismissed. So it gives us the ability to basically do that very quickly each month and sit down with the franchisee and say, you know, hey, number one, these are the penalties that you owe us because you weren't compliant here, and number two, we see some issues here, we need to try and find ways to fix it. So it's going to be a two-pronged approach of not only collecting penalties, but we want to try and fix the problem as well. So we were able to do that basically up to the minute when we pull information off that software.
Okay, so this is not perceiving any problems, just say you go two or three months and you're having the same issues and the penalties aren't working. Counsel, are we, is there a place in the contract that says, well, and I'm not perceiving any problems here, but how does the contract work in that particular case?
Well, the contract actually does have a revocation provision, and it defers to the ambulance ordinance that we have in section, let me tell you exactly which one, section 8.0, 8.190 in our municipal code. So I believe it's a 12-hours notice if that's the city council's desire to revoke this franchise or any franchise.
So you have, the city has the ability to revoke that franchise and quickly move on if they felt like they weren't being treated properly?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, and there is also specific language in there about failure to comply over a period of three months throughout the year within any one of those two zones. And so, and again, I mean, these are patients' lives that are at risk, and we're going to take that very seriously.
Okay. Because you gave this presentation, I'm going to open up for public hearing, just in case somebody heard something and wants to talk or something like that. So if you'd stand by, that'd be great. We're going to go back and open this up to public comment. Anybody like to come up and comment for the council on this particular contract? Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Counsel, this is the time to take motion or leave it there?
Mayor?
Well, actually, if you'd like to have the honor.
I would, thank you. I'd just like to move that we select Medic West and approve the form of agreement that has been submitted. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item nine, ratify group life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment insurance coverage proposal by Unum Insurance Company of America in the approximate total amount of $116,112. $58,056 annually for a two-tier term for all active employees and retirees for a period of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2019.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions, this? I don't, if not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
This one isn't in Ward 2, you know?
We have an echo. Please cast your, we have a motion.
Push the button first. Okay, thank you.
Items approved.
Item 10, approve cooperative agreement between the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department and the City of North Las Vegas Police Department for the joint use of firing ranges and facilities owned by the cities of Las Vegas and North Las Vegas.
Thank you very much. Chief Perez, welcome this evening.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Good evening, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to discuss the project that has been talked about for some time now. As you may know, the North Las Vegas Police Department firing range, which is located at the end of West Carey, sits just west of the Las Vegas Metro range, and our range has been in operation for many decades, and it shows its worth. As our city and this department continue to grow in the rank and file, the quality of the training that we provide our police officers must grow with it. Sheriff Lombardo and his team contacted me last year to discuss ways that we can utilize our land to develop a large joint training facility, state-of-the-art. We have spent the last year going over plans on how it would be carried out operationally, a lot of discussions, a lot of things to be worked out, both operationally and through our legal offices. And I'm pleased to say that we have made great headway and in the right direction. The joint facility will serve as a central hub, if you will, for most of, if not all agencies across the valley. The success of this project moving forward has depended greatly on our relationship with our friends at Metro, our legal team, and from this mayor and council. We are truly grateful to be working on this together. Now, I will say that the sheriff is here today in support, and there will be a presentation, and I'll stand by, I promise I won't leave, to answer any questions you may have of me later after the presentation.
Thank you, Chief, and welcome, Chief Lombardo. Before we get too far in this, you've been a great partner to this community during the dire times. You came rushing over to North Las Vegas while we didn't have enough police officers. We have been hiring and doing our best to get back, but we also appreciate during that Mandalay issue, that when all your officers went down to that direction, our police covered the whole northwest part of the valley. I mean, it was just a seemingly, you wouldn't notice the difference between what departments were when there's an issue in this community, and we thank you for your leadership during those periods of time, and nice to have you here, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity, for the record, Sheriff Lombardo, Clark County resident. As Chief Perez mentioned, it is a conversation that's been ongoing for quite some time. It is, the conversation entails the ability for North Las Vegas PD to utilize our existing firearms range, which is in close proximity of the North Las Vegas range. It's a state-of-the-art range utilizing for firing weaponry. But as we move forward and after the audit that was conducted by the Department of Justice on my police department and the use of deadly force, it was recommended by the Department of Justice that reality-based training become the best practice associated with what police officers do on a regular basis. So high-risk, low-frequency events that involve police interaction usually, well, I wouldn't say usually, it also encompasses use of deadly force. So the design of this is a facility that could accommodate classroom instruction and practical exercise where individual police officers can be put in situations that they would encounter on the street in low frequency to teach them de-escalation techniques and proper use of engagement. We did not have the facility space to accommodate this. We are basically Band-Aids and duct tape in one of our current facilities in this training regimen, so we are looking more in long-term. And as you mentioned, Mayor, a lot of what we do in police action is, you know, a group effort, and we go across boundaries, city lines on a regular basis, and I think it's important for us to have the ability to train together and offer a facility for both my department and your department, so that training is symbiotic and that we conduct it together. Because on more than one occasion, we do have the opportunity to work together, and New Year's Eve is a perfect example. New Year's Eve, it is a collaborative effort on a regular basis. I do not have the ability to own property per NRS, so, and I didn't have the ability through my funding mechanisms to accomplish what we are attempting to accomplish, so the request was of North Las Vegas to provide the space or the land geography so that we could build a joint facility, and then in turn, North Las Vegas could utilize our firearm range for firearm activity. So the funding associated with it was identified through the inter-local agreement, and that was worked out through officials on both sides of the House, and before I get into any further, Officer Andy Locer is going to provide you a PowerPoint presentation of what we are attempting to accomplish, and I have my CFO, Rich Hogan, here could discuss what was agreed upon between the city managers. Or actually, it wouldn't be the city manager, because my city manager would not be involved in the discussion.
Great, thank you. Please proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, sir. For the record, my name is Andy Locer, resident of Clark County. My current job is project manager, working on this project full-time. Would like to, as I give you the presentation, walk through the need for it, and then I'll walk through some of the very specific items that we're looking for and some of the ways that we're hoping to accomplish them as we move forward with this. So as the sheriff said a second ago, and Chief Perez also said, that our communities work together very well on an ongoing basis, and I think that the recent events have proven that. I believe that we can work better and that we can provide a better response for both our communities moving into the future. The way we do this, mutual cooperative training. Some of the background here, general first responder training, if you're not aware of it, the spring court has mandated several times that we provide realistic training based on the current events that are happening and based on situations that we may find ourselves in. Our department has had some issues providing that type of training, as has your department. We just don't have the land or the resources separately to make this happen. We need to come to a mutual agreement. In this case, it's going to be a land and a training environment. De-escalation, as the sheriff mentioned a few minutes ago, is identified as a need through the DOJ when they did the study with our department. De-escalation is a learned response to critical situations. In the past, police departments have provided one typical response. The communities nowadays, though, require that we de-escalate or attempt to de-escalate situations to the lowest level, preservation of life, preservation of property. To do that, it requires a lot of training, and it requires training in a realistic environment under realistic conditions. Now, short of using a regular house somewhere or shutting down a wing of a hospital or something like this, we would like to do that in a closed environment, training environment, so our officers can learn versus just having to react when they face a situation in real life. That is the background for the need, this type of facility. Okay, this partnership, what we're, the long-term goal here is not just an agreement between Clark County and an agreement between North Las Vegas, it would be an agreement with the valley, with the first responders within the valley. LVMPD, North Las Vegas PD, great response, but we're not the only people around. And again, going back to the events of October 1st, I think it became very obvious at that point that first responders include EMS, fire, police, casino security, other professionals within the valley. These professionals all need to respond in a like manner with known tactics, agencies that know each other, agencies that are trained together, and that will provide the type of response that we want to have. Quite frankly, as a community, we want a very good, solid response to these types of events. Our goal on this is to do just that, provide the coordinated response to events that happen within our community, whether they're events on a very low-level scale, or we're just helping each other out across boundaries, or they're, you know, higher-level events. I'm going to move into a description really quick of what the current assets are and the current locations, if you're not familiar with them. We have a large chunk of land that we use up there for our firearms training. We've been there for about 25 years now. I think North Las Vegas has been on their land for a similar amount of time, and we really share, as you can see, property lines. We're in the process also of picking up another 93 acres from BLM to expand this entire facility. Land, of course, moving forward is going to be our big, it's going to be our big, well, essentially what we need, all right? I'm losing the word there. Quickly, North Las Vegas has two 50-yard ranges down in our facility, and they work out of Conex boxes. Our facility, we have approximately 12 ranges at this point. We have permanent offices, permanent workspaces, and we are funding right now new offices, new workspaces, and the ongoing construction of ranges. As an overall view, we're breaking this into two sections. One, the live-fire section, which is a section that we currently have at the top of the hill with LVMPD. This is going to include another nine-range build-out, new offices, as I mentioned a second ago. We eventually plan indoor ranges and upgrading the facilities that we have there. At the bottom of the hill, on the plot of land currently owned by North Las Vegas, this is all going to be a Sims village, Sims area. We're going to be working on defensive tactics, reality- We're going to be working on defensive tactics, reality-based training, and MAC-TAC concepts. This entire facility down there is a no-fire facility. It's going to be very, very clean. It's going to be very quiet. It's going to be even quieter to the residents than the facility is right now. I have about another 10 or so slides here, and these are just the build-outs, quick plans, what we plan as we move into the future here. First thing we're looking at is new Range 6 expansion. That was really the groundbreaking for this entire facility. This was entirely funded through our funds and through gaming. Next stage, this is also funded at this point, this is going to be new office space, which there's going to be room for North Las Vegas officers in the same space, and new classrooms. I know that a lot of you have been involved in education, and the difference between a new, modern classroom and an old trailer should be pretty obvious really quick. We're going to be building nine new ranges. These ranges are geared towards modern police tactics, modern police use, and they have changed dramatically since I've been on the department. Our needs for those and the needs of our departments are very, very similar. The final stage up there will be indoor ranges. I mentioned a second ago that the Supreme Court has mandated we do the type of training based on the type of calls that we get. This allows us to do, to train in the dark. This allows us to train, allows us to train when it's 115 outside, and we can train well. Working down the hill, this is on the North Las Vegas side here, the first phase of this project would be the build-out of defensive tactics, mat rooms, new office space, reality-based training is going to be stationed in here, as well as MAC-TAC units. The next section of the build-out in here, called 1.1, this is going to be an indoor village, actually, two indoor villages and an interior movable wall space. Going back to the indoor ranges, this is the non-fire version of those. This is where we can practice defensive tactics. We can practice these de-escalation skills, but under adverse conditions, say, we can fill a place with smoke, we can turn off the lights, and that dramatically changes the type of training that we do and that we can do. The next section here is a low-speed emergency vehicle operations area. This is low speed for two reasons. One, to bring a full track into a neighborhood like that, I've, we're good neighbors, let's face it, and there's no reason that we need to bring in a full-speed track. Most of our accidents, most of the traffic problems in this valley happen at under about 30 miles an hour. This is our simulation of that. We can do a lot of different things with this type of track, but it is a low-speed Moving in from there, this is the outdoor village. This village is designed to represent various types of structures within our community, single-story houses, two-story houses, trailer parks, commercial areas, this sort of thing. These are the types of areas that we commonly, well, that we get our calls at. Going back to the reality-based training, this is where we need to train, and we need to train under realistic conditions. It needs to be a real two-story house with stairwells and bedrooms, kitchens, clothing in the closets, this sort of thing. The next section is a build-out, further build-out of more classrooms, some more defensive tactics areas, and a small theater. The theater is, the design on that incorporates two different ideas. One, from a training standpoint, where we can train our MAC-TAC guys to go in an active-shooter situation in theater-type environments, but this is also a real theater, too. We can go in there and we can put on real presentations, and much like this room here, it's a nice room. Next section is an academy area. One of the, one of the issues that we're having valley-wide, and I know North Las Vegas is having this issue right now, is lack of academy space. We're getting pushed around. CSN has moved them out of the space, or in, they're in a new space now. What I understand is a nice space, but it's an office building, and the type of training that we do is just not conducive to an office-type environment. You need these reality-based components. Because it's co-located in this big complex, it's within walking distance of all these other attractions, I guess. That's it. That's my overview of the entire project.
Thank you, very good presentation. Counsel, any comments for the presenter?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Black?
Out of the currently funded components, what's the projected build-out time and/or completion date?
There are two currently funded projects. One is Range 6. That will be completed within, I think, 75 days. That's a first-quarter project. They are moving dirt as we speak. The second one, the new Range House and the new office space and the classrooms up there, we're projecting at this point at about 18 months to 24 months. We have just entered the architectural renderings, so we have that to work our way through. The input that we're taking for that building, we're using your people, we're using other people within the valley, too, because this is going to be a true regional concept. This is not just us, and it's not just you, it's a region, and we need to get everybody's input into all these projects. But to answer your question very specifically, 18 to 24 months.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think so very much. In briefings, of course, it was explained to us, you know, the nature of the access to our police department and the cost. Can you, for the sake of the public, kind of just give some high points on the, on the access that our department will have, and I guess, the cost that we're expected to pick up?
The access is mutual access. Metro, even though we're spearheading this project, we are not going to be the entity using it. This is a mutual agreement on this. When I say mutual, I mean 100% equal. There is not, there's not going to be any preference given to any department when it comes to the use of the training facilities, and that's not just the firearms range, but that is also the village down there, the defensive tactics areas, all the offices. This is a mutual project. Your, what was the second part of your question?
If there's any cost that will be, that the city of North Las Vegas and our police department will be burdened with.
Yeah, a very good question. Mayor, City Council, for the record, Rich Hogan, Chief, and Anselm, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. Just to kind of go through the agreement a little bit, because I think it'll answer your question, Councilman. The agreement is a 99-year term. It seems like a long time to enter an agreement when we're looking at something that is a long-term commitment. That's what we're hoping to achieve. The terms are such that basically we have a due diligence period where we can, where we'll be working with your staff to render some architectural designs and earnestly seek, I think what's important here, which perhaps hasn't been mentioned, is that we're earnestly seeking private funding to construct the building through our police foundation. So, we're really looking at this as a public-private partnership at the end of the day, at least for the first phase of the facility, and then going forward as we build out in future phases. So, the cost to North Las Vegas for, to use our current range, essentially, we're exchanging the use of the land for the use of the range and the facility. The cost to use our range and our, and the facility that Officer Loker mentioned that we're constructing is nothing to North Las Vegas. Our intent is to maintain that facility essentially. Because you guys are providing, North Las Vegas is providing the land to us, then that's essentially the contribution that we're looking, that North Las Vegas is making in return for, for the use of the, of the facility. Similarly, when the AOST facility, the reality-based training facility and advanced officer training facilities constructed on North Las Vegas land, there wouldn't be any commitment from North Las Vegas to maintain the facility there as well. So, we're coming to you essentially with the request to use the land in return for no additional outlays to maintain the facility going forward.
Thank you. I think that covered my questions.
Councilman Churchill?
I don't have any questions. First, just let me say thank you to you both. Thank you, Sheriff, for partnering with us over here and with Chief Perez. We live in a crazy time, like I'm telling you something that you don't know. But this is, you know, I was briefed on this a while back by Assistant Chief Noor, but not to this degree, what it looks like and everything. This is truly amazing. You know, this is, this is state-of-the-art and is an example, at least in my mind, and for the residents that we all serve over here and the residents that you serve, what we could really accomplish jointly when we pull our resources together and put the needs of the community first. And I think out of everything that was said over here tonight in the presentation, I keep falling back on the first slide that you had that said, same goals, same community. And I think that's extremely important, because the problems that we share and the good things that we do don't have a city boundary. So, we're all in this together, and I very much appreciate you partnering with us. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We're going to open this to public comment real quick. If you'd stay close to them, you know, be prepared to come back up, that would be great. Did you have anything else to offer?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, I'm going to open up a public comment then, okay? Thank you. Counselors, seeing no more comments or questions right now, I'll open this up to public comment. Anybody in the public would like to come up and speak on this issue, please come forward. Is Mr. Flores still here?
Is this on? Okay, it's on. Boy, this is really impressive, and it looks like something we need, because Las Vegas, Las Vegas Valley has unique needs, because we are a transient community. We have people living in this community who, we don't even know who they are. They're on street corners, we don't know where they're from, we don't know if they're rapists, child molesters, or even bad people. And after this thing on October 1st, we need to take another look on how we handle these high rollers. It's been a common thing in this town since the mob has, used to run this city, that the high rollers came in, they didn't play by the rules. If they wanted a hooker, they got a hooker. If they didn't want their hotel room inspected, they didn't get the hotel room inspected. That's how this guy killed 51 people. He killed 51 people because he was a high roller. He was treated special. He was held up in his hotel room for eight days. Nobody thought to go in there because he was spending money. It's time we got to get more serious about how, we can't do, have one set of rules for rich people and one set of rules for the average Joe. Otherwise, we're going to repeat something like this. This looks like a great facility, and I like the idea of the two police departments working together, because it really is one community, which makes me wonder if maybe now is the time, just to merge the two police departments, would that possibly save the two cities money if it was just one police department handling the whole area? Wouldn't that even solve some problems? Like, if an accident happens on Decatur, which is the dividing line between North Las Vegas and Las Vegas, who shows up? In a lot of situations, both departments show up, which seems like a waste of manpower. I'm just, has anybody ever done a study? I mean, we've got some of the brightest people in the world down at UNLV. Maybe we should have UNLV get in this thing and see if it might be a better thing for the taxpayers to merge the two police departments. What do you think? Get some feedback from you.
We could take that in our advisory, but the issue tonight is the range itself.
Well, it looks great. Can we afford to pay for it?
We will be paying nothing. The land is our commitment. That is our-
I'm sorry, what?
The land, what we're giving them allows us not to have to pay any money.
Oh, well, that's, that's good. Glad to hear that, because I'm always concerned about money.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come up and comment on this item? If not, we'll close public comment. Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Counsel, what is your favor on this?
Mayor, I'd like to just, before going any further, I'd just like to point out that we have two Rancho guys who are responsible for this deal, right? We've got, of course, our very own wonderful chief and the sheriff, they're both Rancho guys, and I just want to point out that three people up here are also Rancho people, too, not that I'm counting. But with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this agreement.
Before I accept that motion, just so you know, Ms. Goins-Brown wanted to go to Rancho, but her father insisted that she went to Gorman, but she's a Rancho girl at heart.
At heart.
Oh, wow.
Did I say that right?
No, you did not. Actually, it was Clark, but it's okay.
No, we love our local men and women serving in our community. So, we have a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Chief, good luck. When was, Chief, just for one sec, Chief, when do you see this actually starting in the construction stages? What can we expect, or Sheriff, however you guys want to discuss that, just for future knowledge?
For the record, Sheriff Lombardo, Clark County resident. Well, like we said, the two phases that are currently funded are in progress now. We will work out the timeline associated with the use of the firearms facility with Chief Perez. Him and I will have some ongoing conversation here in the immediate, but as far as the build-out of the North Las Vegas land, we have to put the funding in place now. And like I had mentioned to you in private, we have a substantial amount of that money already allocated, but we want to make sure that we get the full amount here in the near future. So, I can't really answer the question.
So, we'll continue to use our range-
Yes, absolutely.
-and Chief's training will continue to go on until-
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Chief?
Mayor and Council, rest assured that the operational impact to the department has been thought through and worked out and scheduled. We will continue on at our range for our next quarter qualifications, and then we've scheduled out with Las Vegas Metro and Officer Loker over at, for our second shooting schedule, which will be later on in the year. So, we are, we are preparing ourselves to move on, clear the land, leave it open for the bulldozers or whatever equipment they need to bring through to get it done, to move forward when they can greenlight it. So, it's all smoothed out, it's worked out, it's scheduled out for the next year, so we're in a good way. Lot of communication, a lot of talks and meetings, and it's proved to be very fruitful, and I'm very grateful for you, and also to my partner, the Sheriff Lombardo and his staff. Amazing.
Well, thank you, Chief. You brought a lot of credibility back to the department as our chief and honesty and the community that you come from. I'm not sure with the great career you've had, if anything, will be bigger than this. This will be a legacy piece for every other chief behind you to be have the benefit of this great intelligence you and Chief Lombardo, or Sheriff Lombardo brought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Item 11, approve first amendment to the crosswalks and roadways marking service agreement with Anderson Asphalt and Striping LLC, which increases funding of the original agreement from $50,000 to an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the remainder of FY 1718 with the installation and removal of crosswalks and roadway markings on an as-needed basis at various locations throughout the city.
Thank you, Counsel. Any comments or questions to this item? If not, the chair will take a motion. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve? We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 12, award bid number 1498 and approved construction contract with Wheeler's Electric, Inc., in the amount of $200,170 from street maintenance funds for the street light knock-down and replacement program project, CAP Project Number 10465.
Thank you, Counsel. Any comments, questions, if not, on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 12.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Note for the viewing audience, item 13 was withdrawn. Item 14, discussion and appointment of acting city manager.
Per the contract, or pardon me, per the ordinances of the city of North Las Vegas, we have to have somebody take on the position of city manager, and so at this time, the acting city manager, pardon me, the acting assist, the assistant city manager is being requested to be the acting city manager for a period of time. I don't think there's a presentation, so what I'll do is I have a lot of cards here. I'll take these cards, and we'll just start going through them just a little bit. I'll take these cards, and we'll just start going through them just a little bit. Mr. Fred Horvath? I'm just going down the list here. Mr. Fred Horvath?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Fred Horvath, Clark County resident. I would like to wear two hats briefly tonight. One, retired Assistant City Manager at the city of Henderson and provide some observations. And then, as the Executive Director of Member Benefits of Teamsters Local 14, I stand before you with unqualified support for Mr. Juden's appointment. We've worked together in the past. We've worked in Carson City, and I think he is uniquely qualified to take the city to the next level. I think by any measure, Dr. Lou was exactly what this organization needed at the time. And I think that you have two very incredible executives in Mr. Juden and Ms. Moore to lead this city as it recovers as an organization, just as the city itself and the economy does. However, I would ask you to not delay in making a decision. An acting position comes with its own set of paralysis, where people aren't sure they need to get on board. They don't know. It makes it very difficult for an acting individual who's in a variety of acting roles and experienced Acting City Managers and Assistant City Managers. And I would just encourage you, if, not to dally about where you want to go with this, if you really want to move forward. You've got some big things going on, collective bargaining with most, if not all, of your labor organizations. We are hurdling towards BDRs being prepared for the next legislative session. So, I don't want to be redundant, but I would encourage you not to have a long-term acting assignment so the whole organization can move forward with new leadership. As the Executive Director of Member Benefits for Local 14, I just express my appreciation to Ryan for the work he's done for us in getting previous collective bargaining agreements wrapped up and just working through day-to-day issues. We look forward to continuing our collaborative relationship with the city. A lot of really important work took place over the last decade to get the city through its challenges, and again, we're personally unqualified support for Mr. Juden. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bob Mercerow? Bob, I recognize on number eight you had asked us, but we had approved that on the consent, so it's okay.
That's fine. Bob Mercerow, 4836 Crystal Sword Street here in North Las Vegas. I did want to say a couple of things about Dr. Lou. I think we need to give her accommodations. You know, we should congratulate her for a lot of achievements that she did have. So, I know that's probably forthcoming, but I think that's important. As far as the Assistant City Manager and the City Manager and so on thing, I think it's incumbent upon the City Council to go ahead and right away start a national search for the City Manager with all the qualifications and everything else. What we're looking for in this city is somebody that has no ties to the city, the council, anything like that, no political history, or any members of the council, or somebody involved in the government. We want a fresh air in the city to clean all the slate that's been going on for the last many, many years here. For us that have been around here for 15 years or so, know what's been going on here. So, my suggestion is we have a immediate start for a nationwide search with nobody connected to the city whatsoever would even be considered for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mercerow. Mr. Michael Yarder?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Michael Yarder. I'm the President of the North Las Vegas Police Officers Association. Thank you for letting me stand before you tonight and speak on this matter. As most of you know, I've been around a little while. This is not the first time that I've been up here. I've either been the President or the Vice President for the last 14 or 15 years for our department, for our association. So, I have a little bit of experience, and I've gone through numerous City Managers and Assistant City Managers. I believe this will be my ninth one, if I'm not mistaken. So, consistency, I think that's important. I think that we have a moment right now to have some consistency going forward. We have an opportunity with Mr. Juden as a guy younger than me to have some time in his position. He's been in his role as the Assistant City Manager. Going forward, I think it gives consistency to the Council, future councils, the people that will be up there long after you're gone, to set forward a plan for the city and continue your guys' vision of what's going on right now. And I can tell you that we went through a tough time as a city, as citizens, as employees in this city the last several years. And, you know, it's a testament, I think, not only to Mr. Juden who's sitting here, but in yourselves, but also Dr. Lou. You know what? I was an advocate for her. I'm an advocate for Ryan, I think collaboratively together, that they worked well. And, you know, eventually, you're gonna have a disagreement, and it's unfortunate that it rose to the level that it did. But, you know what? We need to go past that. I know in speaking with Dr. Lou, and like I said, I had a very good relationship with her, that she wants to move past that as well. And, you know, going forward, I think that we all have good ideas and that we're gonna be able to, we've righted the ship. We need a captain on the ship. I would just say, don't hesitate in appointing someone out. We have to have a captain on the ship. Whether you decide to do an outside search or you stay internal, I think you've got a great candidate right now. And if you open it up to outside, I think that that will rise to the top, and you'll have the best candidate internally. I'm a big fan of staying internal. I know that always doesn't happen across the different departments, but I'm a big fan, and our organization is, of putting the best person in that position. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yarder. Ms. Jennifer Lazovich?
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm also speaking on behalf of Bob Gurnauer, who couldn't be here tonight. We too would like to offer our show of support for Ryan Juden for this position. In the past, while we have had issues, whenever we have worked with Ryan, we found him to be a problem solver, and we think that that is an excellent quality for you to have in an acting interim or permanent City Manager, and he certainly displays that quality. It's helpful to the development community. We represent a lot of the developers, and having someone to go to who can find problems and we can sit at the table and figure out a solution is very helpful to us and our clients. So, we would encourage you to support Ryan Juden for this position.
Thank you very much. Mr. Golden Welch?
Hello, Counsel. Golden Welch, CEO for Apex Holding Company. We're still the largest landowner in the Apex Industrial Park. I was a little bit saddened by Apex being maybe the source of a rift within the city, because I think the city's doing a great job and doing everything they can in their limited capacity in helping Apex. So, we appreciate that. I've had historical dealings with Dr. Lou, primarily in her capacity as a Public Works Director. I consider her to be a competent friend. That said, I believe Ryan is a fist fighter and a brilliant one at that. I view him as a competent friend, and I think that his appointment to this position is going to be very beneficial to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shof. Ms. Gail, Mr. Welch, Gail Shof, please.
Gail Shof, 5622 Midnightbury Street, North Las Vegas. I come up here with a heavy heart. I think the world of Ryan on a personal level, but I don't feel he is qualified to run my city. And I feel very, very disgusted with people that come up here that don't live here and don't foot the bill, but they want to tell us what's best for our city. I agree with Mr. Mercerow. I believe we need a nationwide search. When Ryan was created, he had a job created for him, Chief of Staff. When the times were miserable here, we were letting people go left and right because this city was so broke. That was wrong. It was wrong to create a position that we never had, and to put maybe a code enforcement officer or somebody from Public Works out of work. Wrong. This is North Las Vegas City Hall, not Tammany Hall. And I like to get away from that old North Town crap, and this doesn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shof. Mr. Dave Brown?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Dave Brown, 9910 West Cheyenne, here on behalf of myself and also my client, Solo Investments One. I'm gonna keep this brief tonight. I actually got a babysitter for my two kids, and that doesn't happen very often, so my wife had to come with me to a City Council meeting, and she said, "This is the worst date you've ever taken me on." First off, I want to echo Jennifer Lazovich and Golden Welch's comments. I won't repeat them, but they were spot-on about Mr. Juden and also about the city of North Las Vegas. I've spent 10 years here, 10 years, working with Apex and representing various landlords in Apex and have come to get to know every single City Council person and almost every single staff person here at the city of North Las Vegas. I consider your Public Works Director my sister. We argue about everything. She doesn't always give me the answer I want, but I know I can count on her answer. That's the same thing with Mr. Juden. I come to his office. We meet about different topics. He gives me the straight answer. He gives me an answer I can take back to my clients and say, "This is the answer. It's not gonna change." So, I think you're making a great selection here. I would like to put one thing on the record. The memo that came out was very disheartening to myself and my clients in Apex. It called the project we've been working hard on with the city, Spurious Waterline Oversizing Agreement. We've been working on that for over a year with the city. To see that come out in a memo from the previous City Manager is very disheartening to us. Like I said, we put our stock in what people say. That same previous City Manager sent us email after email and said, "Thank you and your client for putting up over $400,000 in advance of this oversizing agreement, because we're working in good faith with you to do this oversizing agreement." And to turn around and have it called Spurious, and I'll be honest with you, for those of you that don't know what Spurious means, I didn't know either. I had to look it up. It means illegitimate. It means not honest, not genuine. And so, to have that said about a project you've been working on and your client spent over $400,000 on is very, very disheartening to us. So, I appreciate what you're doing here. I appreciate the change, and hopefully, we can continue on that path of working with all of you and the honesty and genuine aspect of North Las Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, Mr. Burchard, Gary Burchard?
I want to reiterate what another person earlier said. It warms the cockles of my heart that people who don't live in the city, that do not pay taxes in the city, that do not care about the future of this city, will take time away from their busy lives to come here and tell us how to run North Las Vegas. Thank you and God bless you. Moving along, it's so nice to hear so many people say nice things about a city official, because as you know, right now, a lot of people think the government, from the top down, is corrupt. Thank you, Mr. Trump, for that. Last week, I read two newspaper articles. One came from the RJ, one came from a newspaper I didn't even know we had. It's called the Nevada Independent. And here's what I read. This is not me talking. This is what was in the newspaper. And we don't need this type of crap in the newspaper, because it makes us look bad, that the City Manager had a two-hour shouting match with the Assistant City Manager claiming that Ryan was not a team player, was not taking direction from her, and supposedly, Ryan says, "Hey, I take my direction from John Lee." And I wasn't there. All I know is what I read in the newspaper. But somehow, knowing how this city works, I've been here for 17 years. I've been through Montandon. I've been through Sherry Buck, and four and a half years with you. And the politics here is politics is normal. In the words of our president and fearless leader, it is time we drain these swamps. We don't want a City Council that votes yes, yes, yes to everything. We don't need the City Manager be sleeping with the mayor. I don't mean that, I mean that metaphorically. Come on, you guys have been friends for years. I think friendship is a wonderful thing, but I think friendship in the workplace can be a problem. We need to get an outsider that knows what they're doing and tell this mayor, City Council, how this city should be run, because I want to be honest with you people, and I don't dislike any of you people. I wouldn't have any problems going to church with you, sitting down and having dinner with you, but there isn't anybody up there that knows how to run a city. We need to hire a professional. This city spends a million dollars a day. You've got to get somebody with the right degree, somebody with a track record that has come from a city that's run correctly. This city is not run correctly, and it's never gonna be as long as your mayor. If you really care about this city, I think you should run for Congress and get out of this town.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chad Christensen?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I'm not with him. I do love the fire and spirit of local government. So, my name is Chad Christensen, basically lifelong resident of Nevada. Now, I live in Clark County. I don't know really what qualifies someone to stand here to share perspective, but I can say that my partners and I have invested literally millions and millions of dollars here. We pay a tremendous amount of tax here. So, maybe that qualifies me to stand here even though I don't, you know, I don't vote in this city, you know, particularly on city matters. I could go to a lot of other places to invest money. You know why I come here? Because I am a big fan of the city of North Las Vegas. I'm a big fan of the accessibility. Councilmember Ron, I'm a big fan of your accessibility, that you'll take my calls when I have questions. And I congratulate you, Mayor, Counsel, your staff, the team that you've put together to be able to turn things around here. I'm very impressed. Now, maybe it also, another thing that might qualify me to stand here is that I served four terms as a State Assemblyman. So, there's no money in that. I did it out of passion. I represented a big chunk of the city of North Las Vegas. And Mayor, you and I served together in the Legislature. And in that area where you and I shared boundary, I feel like we were able to make a lot of things happen. You had told me about Mr. Juden. I had never met Mr. Juden. He came in after my service in the Legislature. And I remember we met in the, at the Legislature, and I just thought, I can't think of anyone, it's why I'm standing here, I can't think of anyone that I think is more perfect for this kind of role, that has demonstrated passion to be able to jump into a machine that's been a little bit bumpy, to demonstrate commitment to turn things around. And I've come to know him, how his mind thinks. I know that when I'm talking to him, I can't talk in circles. He's gonna cut me off and say, "Chad, you know, get to the point." Again, we don't have history outside of him serving in this role. I don't know what kind of soccer coach he would be. I don't know if he'd be a great gymnastics instructor or any other capacity, but I do know that in the position that you're considering for him, I could not think of anyone better in the entire state of Nevada, based on my experience, that I would recommend more than Mr. Juden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Mr. Smith, do you want to speak on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. You know, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone here. Over these past four and a half years since you've been serving as mayor, you have, it reminds me of the Obama administration... you have, it reminds me of the Obama administration. They drug the city out of literal hell we were going through. And for that, you are to be congratulated over and over again. I'm really torn today about where the city is headed this point forward. You know, the first time that I met Ryan Juden, he tossed me a football, and I tossed him one back, and we played football for a real quick minute. And he tossed it around with my kids. They were pretty short at the time. They're all taller than me now. And you and your city council has really been nothing but good to this city in a lot of ways. Now, I'm going to kind of flip the coin a little bit and let you know some things that I'm concerned about. And I want to caution everybody that, you know what, at the end of the day, we are all taxpayers, and we all have a voice, no matter how it comes out or how it sounds on this microphone. Some of us are on meds, some of us are not, some of us had our coffee, et cetera. Anyway, moving forward, you know, secession is the right or act or process by which one person succeeds to the office, rank, estate, or the like of another. My concern here in the city is that an effective city government should not incubate an internal culture, but rather should foster new servants and new ideas. I only differ an opinion in how we go about getting there. I think that Ryan would make an excellent interim city manager, but I think that the city of North Las Vegas also deserves a fair search for someone who is qualified to run the city, which may be Ryan Juden himself, because certainly he knows the inner workings of this city, and he deserves a fair look at how we're going to fill that position. But to give the impression that he's going to succeed in sort of a coronation is, it just doesn't set well with me. Again, and I love this guy. He's an awesome, awesome man, and he's taken care of this city. He's taken care of you, and he's taken care of this council, and we've led this city forward in a great way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Craig Romi?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Craig Romi. I'm the president of Local 1607, North Las Vegas Firefighters. Well, Dr. Liu, in cooperation with his council, the mayor and department heads, provided the city of North Las Vegas with the guidance to get through this recent recession. The city has emerged from this dire time with a bright future. Unfortunately, with the change in the city's economic situation, sometimes there needs to be a change in the thinking at the top of the city. We are currently in impasse with our contract. We are scheduled for an arbitration in February. Local 1607 has not been in arbitration over a contract in over twenty years. I've only been in this position for a year. So far, my experience with Mr. Juden is he is someone that we can sit down and have a conversation with. He's always willing to work towards a solution for the entire community. Ryan's, you can sit, have a conversation, dispute something, explain each other's points, and then move on with no hard feelings and no walls thrown up. I would recommend that you at least promote him to the assistant city manager. If you do a nationwide search, I'm sure he will once again come out on top. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romi. Appreciate your service, too. Mr. Griffith, Larry Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, Ryan. I don't know where to start. Michaela, back during the recession, we were through some hard times, hard times. Matter of fact, it got so bad, the city was going to go into recession or go into receivership. We were two days away from there, and we got a call from the governor's office that we had to go back to the governor's office to talk about concession agreements to keep this city out of going into receivership. So we did that. We give up probably over $200 million. Before that, I lost over 400 members in this city. I maintain 500 now. That's a lot of tax dollars. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of people unemployed. So moving forward, and I read a lot of things that everybody did, and I read in the paper, I led the magazines. Now I know what Trump talks about, about fake news. All of these articles, none of them are true, because nowadays people weren't even here. So, and I really believe, if you want to write an article, you got to talk to the people that are involved at the time you write it. That'd be a good start. So that's back when I met Ryan and John. When you came on board, you was dealt a mess. You were dealt, when you ran for election, I thought you were crazy, because I couldn't imagine anybody wanting to do that, run for something that's already in the trash. And you've done a great job, you and the council, of bringing this place back where it needs to be. And I never could figure out what he did, but he roamed around here for a while, and then all of a sudden, I found out what he did, because when I couldn't get things done in this city, I went to Ryan, and he got them done. I mean, so then eventually he was made the city manager. So about the piece where you have to live here, pay taxes here, you got to vote here, you got to drink here, you got to buy a house here, that's fine. That's only in the movies. This is real life. I think you guys have done a great job. John, you've done a great job. You've done a great job. You got a new attorney. The thing is, you talk about bringing new people and bringing North Las Vegas up from where it was. We need to move forward. Going out for another search, how many searches have we had? We've been searching all over the place. We haven't found anybody who could do the job yet. Nobody. And I think Ryan is the guy for the job. At one time, I didn't, but now I do. I deal with him just about on a daily basis. At one time, in this city, I had no arbitrations at all, trying to deal with your previous city manager. I have five cases gone to arbitration now. In the past, we could sit down and negotiate in good faith, come to a resolution and get the things resolved. Now, I not only can't get them resolved, the person across the table don't even know what we're talking about. We had a ratification. We negotiated a contract. My members ratified it. People in the city don't even know what it means. I mean, I think that's pretty sad. And so we're in negotiations a while back, the last, after we did the last concession agreement, when the contract ran out. So the assistant, and listen, I'm not here to beat her up. I just want to tell you about my position here with all my members and them losing their jobs. I have nothing against anybody, but when you tell me we have no money, no money, no money, no money, that's all the words I know, no money. You've got no money. Okay, I get it. You've got no money. So here, here in this paper that I read, that, can you shut that off? So in this paper right here, it says, "The day after I ratified all agreements I had here to city, that I convinced my members here, you have no money." The next day, the council meeting, here's what it said. "Council unanimously agreed to give $30,000 pay raise to Dr. Liu, and she'll soon earn $200,000 annually and $146,000 in benefits." How can you justify, or how could she justify, taking this, knowing that you have no money? If I was her, I would have thought to do the right thing, to be a team player. She would have turned that down. She didn't. She took it. So, and that's here or there. But this is a case that I've been dealing with for the last five or six years, things like this. So not only do I agree that Ryan should be the next city manager, you guys need to step up to the plate and make him the city manager, and allow him to hire an assistant city manager to help him do the job. And listen, he covers you. He covers all of you. He covers everybody in the city. So it's time for you to step up and do your job. Why we elected you, I didn't elect you, because I don't vote here, but you got elected to take care of this city, move it to the next place, where we're going. And the thing is, you wonder why you can't hire good employees to come to the city of North Las Vegas. If you guys would go out and raise your wage structure to where people would come here, and you know, everybody said, "Well, let's do a search." We don't do a search. We hire everybody, got fired from somewhere else. Why don't we do that? Why don't we do a search and hire people? Departments heads. I mean, all we have to do is make our wage structure so people will come here and stay here.
Okay.
Am I done?
We have allowed you, yeah, we do allow people when they're in the middle of a statement to finish.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I'm passionate, but, oh, by the way, and I also believe that he should get the same wages starting out as the city manager, not assistant, not acting, city manager. He should get the same wages as Dr. Liu.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else who would like to come up and advance to the council their ideas? Seeing none, we'll close this public comment. Council, we have a decision to make?
Yeah, Mayor. Thank you very much. Well, I definitely want to thank everybody who came down and voiced their opinion. You know, Mayor, that's, by trade, I'm a teacher, and of course, yeah, activist in the community, all that. But that's one thing I've learned, you know, in this position. You make a decision, you get second guessed all the time. I remember being, I think it was at the same spot, when we floated the idea of taking our assistant city manager, Chong Liu, and I don't think we're given credit for appointing Nevada's first immigrant woman, city manager, Asian, in the state of Nevada. I don't think we got credit for that one. As a matter of fact, people second guessed us on that. Matter of fact, I wouldn't be surprised if people who are second guessing us now, or maybe pre-second guessing us, didn't like when we actually appointed Chong Liu. We always try to make the very best decision that we can. We're not just people who are here who are elected because we like to sit on top of a fire truck in a parade. This is my city, too. The same city that, you know, I bought a house in, raised my children in, that I've worked all my life in. The issue at hand is not whether Ryan's going to be the permanent city manager. The issue at hand is, we need someone to run the city right now. I do believe Mr. Smith, I think he especially made some fantastic comments. We need someone right now. I don't know where we're going to lead here in the future, but I do have quite a bit of confidence that Mr. Juden, who's actually worked under Dr. Liu for a couple of years, and who they worked together on numerous projects, projects that, quite frankly, at the time, people thought we were crazy. I think people thought that we were insane going after, you know, big projects, but they've paid off in many different ways. And the city's been brought back with a lot of people, because they were part of a team that also, I think, assembled a fantastic team. We're the first city in the state of Nevada to have over-the-counter business licenses. You got it here first. That was the team that put that together. I think this is the city of choice for businesses who are coming in. That's, quite frankly, a tribute to the city council and the team that was assembled. There's a reason why Jessica Alaba was putting her Honest Company out in, well, Word One. I'm happy to say that. And the reason why, you know, we've built up well over a million feet of industrial office space, and there's way more to come. I think we have a fantastic team. I think we have one of the leaders there, who I know has my confidence that they'll be able to step in. As for what's going to happen for the future, I'm not sure. There definitely raised discussions, but I think we're, for the time being, I think we'll be well-served, and I think we'll be well-led. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other, Councilman Churchill?
Thank you, Mayor. Heard a lot of comments tonight, all very good. The city is going in the right direction. The issue here tonight is really a simple one. By city charter, we need the best qualified person in that position right now to keep the city going in the right direction and to try to serve all the residents as well as our employees out there. The only person qualified to do that tonight is Mr. Juden. So there's really no question in my mind. What the council decides on doing afterwards, you know, that'll be a collective, collaborative decision. But I could assure you that regardless of what your feelings are, pro or con, personality, supportive or not supportive, it's what's important to the city that we need to focus on over here. So, Mayor, that's all I have to say. You got it.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gores Brown?
Without being too redundant, Mayor Pro Tim took my comments, but just because of the city charter, we are required to have a person in place to run the city. Ryan, you know, our history, we honestly, and everyone knows, we did get out to a rocky start, but I think over the time, there has been a trust factor built between you and I. And I personally think we have great briefings, great discussions on issues. You always give me answers. You don't sugarcoat it, shoot it from the hip. So right now, I think our decision is to make a decision on the acting city manager, as required by charter.
Councilman Black?
I just want to say how much I appreciate the process that we have and the open forum and the opportunity that concern residents, both North Las Vegas residents as well as stakeholders and investors and people that care about the progress of our city, have the opportunity to stand and speak. And we did hear some eloquent and clear messages this evening, and I respect all of those. Having been here for about six months, I've had the opportunity to observe the management of our city, and I'm grateful to be on board at this opportune time where we have so many positive things in the works. We have opportunities to continue to grow, develop, and to serve our community and to serve our residents, and to make North Las Vegas a wonderful, wonderful place to live and work and raise a family. Mr. Juden has been at the table. He didn't show up to work last week. He's been at the table, and I believe, just from my observations, has made contributions to some of the successes that we have had. And having said that, I concur with the rest of the council in terms of him being the person that carries us forward at this point in time.
Thank you. At this time, the chair will take a motion?
I'd make a motion to appoint Ryan Juden as our acting city manager.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, final action?
Ordnances under final action were introduced at a previous council meeting for action at this meeting, but may include emergency ordinances. Please note for the viewing audience that item 15 was withdrawn indefinitely. Item 16, pass and adopt ordinance number 2855, amending section 10 of chapter 4 of title 2 of the dismissal code to update the location for council meetings, repealing ordinance number 1649.
Thank you. Counselor, counsel, any comments, questions? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 17, pass and adopt ordinance number 2859, amending title 17 of the dismissal code relating to zoning, ZOA 0717, by amending title 17 zoning ordinance to allow alternative setbacks in the RCL's single-family compact lot residential district and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Mayor, if you'd like to make a comment, I'm really happy to see this amendment, the idea that we'll be able to have a slightly different home style being brought to North Las Vegas. I know that sometimes I get like, I don't know, I visit friends in other parts of the valley and Henderson and the Southwest Valley, and I notice really distinctive architectural styles that I realize that cannot, because of the way our codes are written, can't be brought to North Vegas. But this one's going to, I think, open that up. And I'd really like to thank our Public Works people and, of course, Alfredo there, Alfredo Malesio, in having the vision to bring this to North Vegas. This and winding sidewalks are just the thing for me, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion? Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances introduction. Oh, did you want to mention about 18?
Just as a reminder for the viewing audience, item 18 was withdrawn.
Thank you, Barrett. Moving on to ordinances, introduction only.
There is no public comment for these items, and no action will be taken by the council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on any of these items, please attend the meeting where the final action will be determined and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item 19, introduce ordinance number 2860, amending section 130 of chapter 72 of title 15 of the dismissal code to add provisions to Joint Board of Appeals regarding term limits. limits, removal from office, amending ordinance number 2650. Item 20, introduce ordinance number 2861, amending Section 20 of Chapter 16 of Title 2 of the Municipal Code to add provisions to the Planning Commission regarding term limits, limitations on citizen service, and removal from office, amending ordinance number 2214. Item 21, introduce ordinance number 2862, amending Chapter 2 of Title 13 of the Municipal Code to add provisions to the Utility Advisory Board regarding term limits, limitations on citizen service, and removal from office, amending ordinance number 2551. Item 22, introduce ordinance number 2864 to delete and replace Chapter 60, Section 030, Subsections A and B of Title 10 of the Municipal Code to modify the procedures for the disposition of unclaimed bicycles impounded by the North Las Vegas Police Department, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 23, introduce ordinance number 2863 to delete and replace Sections 010, 030, 040, and 050 of Chapter 64 of Title 2 of the Municipal Code to modify the procedures for the disposition of unclaimed property impounded by the North Las Vegas Police Department, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to appointments, Councilman Brown?
Item 24, appoint an at-large citizen member to the Clark County Regional Flood Control District Citizens Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2018.
Councilman Brown at this time?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, and colleagues here. At this point, I would like to nominate a Ward 1 resident. He is a longtime resident of North Las Vegas, and a noted veteran, a very active in the community, Mr. Mike, people call him Mikey, but I hate calling him that, Michael Kelly.
We have a motion, Council, please cast your vote. Items approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to the City Manager's word, Mr. Acting City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Sir. Mayor and Council, Jeff Albert, who's kind of our resident historian, has an update for us on C.C. McDaniel, which is the city's second mayor. After his presentation, I have a few comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albert, welcome, and thank you for being our unofficial but official city historian.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm going to be using the overhead, so if we can get it on, I'll be putting up some photos and other items. Couple of months ago, two months ago, I talked about our first mayor, Horace Tucker, who was quite a character. He was a well-known bartender, bar owner, and owned a couple of cafes, and he served for just less than a year, and in, that was 1946, just after the city was incorporated. So when his term was up, he ran for reelection against two other parties, and the election that year, we got as our second mayor a gentleman by the name of C.C. McDaniel, and tonight, I'm going to talk about his first two-year term. Back then, he was running for a two-year term, and he did get reelected for a second two-year term. Tonight, I'm going to concentrate on his first term. So who was C.C. McDaniel? He came to North Las Vegas in 1932 at the age of 52. He was from Kansas, born in Kansas in 1880, and he came here with almost nothing. He had his car, and he had about 23 bucks in his pocket, and he went to work for Jim Cashman, who was an auto dealer, and we have Cashman Field, named after him, and he went to work selling cars. And he was quite a good salesman, he did quite well in the business, and he and his family remained very close friends with the Cashmans for many decades henceforth. In 1939, he was able to put together the money, along with a partner, to buy his own car dealership. So here's an ad from the 1939, April 21 edition of the RJ, announcing C.C. McDaniel and Bill Goodwin were going to open up McDonald Auto Company. They just bought it at the corner of First and Ogden Streets, and they were going to sell Chrysler Plymouths and other used cars, and they were inviting people to come and look at the 1939 models. And Mr. McDaniel was very active in our community when we were still unincorporated. He was on water committees, and he was on the town board, and he got very active in city politics, and in 1947, he decided to run to see if he could become our city's second mayor, and I prepared a little sheet, maybe we could blow it up a little. He ran against Horace Tucker, who was our first mayor, trying to get reelected, and one of the current city councilmen, they were called commissioners back in those days, C.W. Eplin. And the result, about 500 people voted, and we're looking at C.C. McDaniel winning by over 100-point spread. Some good facts to know about our little city, we were just a tiny fraction of what we are now. It was all a little part of Ward 1 now around Jerry's Nugget. Population had grown to 3,500. We had an assessed value, tax roll value of $750,000, and the city had $40,000 in the bank, which in those days was considered quite healthy. We were in good shape. So C.C. McDaniel won on May 6th. He got sworn in about four weeks later, and I'm going to talk tonight about the turmoil that immediately was created. It was a lot of chaos. So tonight, I invited the fire department here, I'm glad to see, a lot of them are still here hopefully, and invited the chief to stay on the list, and a lot of things happened when he got elected. He came in on a platform of open competition, no favoritism, and any measures he saw fit to pass by the city's government were to benefit all of North Las Vegas. So this is our second city government. We have our three commissioners, the tall gentleman on the left is Commissioner V.V. Griggs, we have Mayor C.C. McDaniel next to him, and to the right, we have our other commissioners, C.C. McGovern and Robert Benoit, and they were our second set of founding fathers. And here's a better picture, a closer picture, how C.C. McDaniel looked during his first and second term. So remember when he got sworn in, he was already, let's see, he was already 67 years old. So what happened? He was only in office but the first week, in the first city council meeting, he was also, he was with the other commissioners in support of him, he was trying to get rid of our fire chief. The first thing he did was he asked Fire Chief Barney Zigtema, Zigtema, Z-I-G-T-E-M-A, who was a grocery store owner, grocery, Zigtema's Grocery, I believe, is right where Jerry's Nugget is today, he asked the volunteer chief to resign, and all he would say was, he had received citizen complaints, mystery complaints, that the chief and the volunteer fire department was not following the new fire ordinances that were just implemented, and people were upset with the service being received, but he wouldn't go into further detail. Behind the scenes, people were saying that the fire chief was not really happy that the city became incorporated, and there were taxpayers and property owners that were feeling that we should go back to being an unincorporated area. So Mayor C.C. McDaniel was saying that the bosses of Fremont Street were behind this, and, you know, like, tried to get us to disincorporate, and he asked the fire chief to step down. The fire chief said, no way, and his department was behind him. They said, we're voluntary, we have nothing to do with the city. The mayor wanted to know, well, who owns the fire department? Who owns the city truck? We had one truck. Who owns the hoses and the fire extinguishers? The fire department said, we don't know, but all we know is, we raised the money to buy a lot of the equipment. The fire department was very progressive, our volunteer fire department started in 1939, and they raised money by holding community dances, 50 cents a couple proceeds went to the fire department to purchase equipment. The county, Clark County, actually supplied our first fire truck. And here it is, the fire department. Our fire department was all volunteers, 20 active members with chief, they had a chief, an assistant chief, one captain, and a lot of volunteers. They had 20 on their staff, and they also had a waiting list. And Chief Zigtema is up, standing up here in the back, the first one under the L.A. of Las Vegas. So the fire department was fully behind the chief, they didn't think he should resign, they felt they were independent, that they can control their own department, and the city should butt out. They felt they had a good relationship with the city, they actually offered their rec room to the city for use, the city painted it, bought some chairs, and it became the municipal court. So our one judge, Taylor, Judge Taylor actually held court in the fire department's rec room. So there was a big battle going on, the chief didn't want to give up his position, the fire department had many meetings to support their chief, and they voted as a department to support the chief, and only listened to the chief, and they wanted to remain independent. So nothing was settled for about five months. Five months later, all of a sudden, the mayor department, excuse me, the mayor and the city council, at one of their meetings, come out and openly fired Chief Zigtema, and they appointed an acting chief, one of the other firemen who refused, he said, I don't want to do it, I'm still supporting our chief. So nothing was happening, nothing was going to happen for another couple of months, and the fire department held its ground, the mayor and council held their ground, and the fire department said, we may have to take this to a court for a decision. So the next month, in December of 1947, there was a recall petition started amongst citizens to recall the mayor and all three city commissioners. They felt that they were not serving the city well, and the fire department said, well, we want to really bury the hatchet. We, let's have a possible election early next year, early 1948, and elect a new chief and see what happens. Well, the city didn't take that well, and the next month, in January 1948, they passed the city ordinance that would now start paying our firemen, and they wanted to have the chief as an appointed position by the mayor, with approval by the city commissioners. Right away, the fire department held another meeting, said, no, we don't accept this, we want to remain volunteers, we want to stay independent. The recall election petition proceeded, and it was very complicated back in those days to, everybody thought there were enough votes to be, to qualify for this recall of all four members of our city council, but back then, it went by some complicated formula about Supreme Court votes, and it turned out that only one of the petitions succeeded against one of the commissioners, C.C. McGovern, and they actually held a recall election. Nobody signed up to run against him, and he wound up winning 95 to 40 to keep his office. The next month, in April of 1948, the city council had a very contentious closed meeting, which was probably against the law, and they fired the entire volunteer police, excuse me, fire department, fired every one of them. They appointed William Frick as the new chief. He was the owner of one of the local auto courts called Cactus Court, and he reluctantly accepted the position. The next month, the fire department was fully active, and before I go into more details where this photo came from, it was part of an RJ article, and I just want to read the first couple of paragraphs about the fire department back then.
Jeff, do you want to break this up into two presentations?
I actually am. This is part one. I only got a couple more minutes. I could probably talk about two hours about this guy.
We just have a state, your speech is longer than my state.
The best parts are coming up there.
My State of the City speech.
I could get up there tomorrow. The North Las Vegas Fire Department, this goes with this picture, which has answered approximately 300 fire calls in the past six years, still has five of the charter members serving in the voluntary capacities for the protection of property in the unincorporated town. So this is, article was just before we got incorporated in 1946. It says, although not officially a member of the department, Mrs. Barney Zigtema stands in the unique position of being purveyor of information on fire calls, and has rendered this service since the department was organized in May of 1939. All fire calls within North Las Vegas are telephoned to Barney's grocery store, or to Mr. Zigtema's home directly. It is Mrs. Zigtema's responsibility to answer the phone. If the alarm is sounded at night, Mrs. Zigtema answers the telephone while her husband dresses hastily to rush to the station. A similarity in telephone numbers oftentimes causes Zigtema to prepare to go to the firehouse when it really is only a wrong number, but he never takes a chance that it will be. So with the new fire, with the old fire department fired, the new fire department has some success. Here's a picture of William Frick, the new fire chief, and he is very organized, and here's a nice little article about what they did in a typical day, how they got a workout, because usually they got maybe one call a day. So I'm going to quickly read this article. "North Vegas Firemen Get a Workout." This is May of 1948. "The city's brand-new fire department got its first workout all of a sudden this morning. Fires broke out almost simultaneously at the Oasis Auto Court and in a truck parked behind City Hall," according to Fire Chief William Frick. "First call was received from the auto court on North Main Street, where an oil hot water heater had exploded in one of the motel units. He said the fire was under control in 10 minutes, and that smoke and water damage to the motel was slight, the fire being confined to an outside shed which housed the heater. Impartial North Las Vegas citizens on both sides of the recent political fight over replacement of the fire department hastened to call the Review Journal, praising or damning the efforts of the firemen and their work at the blaze. Chief Frick said he had a full crew of 10 men at the fire. Upon their return to the station, the firemen were confronted with the truck fire caused by the sun's rays being magnified through a large jug of water, which was in the rear of a vehicle along with a load of junk," the chief said. "Little of value was damaged. Owner of the truck was from Perump, was in county jail on a charge of assault with a deadly weapon against a, against a police officer the night before." And then finally, just to jump a year ahead, when things have calmed down, in, also in May of 1948, an independent women's committee was appointed to thoroughly review the fire department, and they had a very in-depth, long article about it in the RJ, lots of good information of what our city's fire department was like in 1948. Finally, jumping ahead a year later, a funny little article to end with, this is from the RJ, June of 1949, as Mayor McDaniel was finishing his first two-year term, title, "North Las Vegas Fire Chief Misses Blaze at His Home." "There was a couple of charred spots at the Cactus Court filling station today, that's the station that the chief owned. Here's how it happened. The compressor was compressing for all it's worth yesterday afternoon. Fire Chief Frick, the owner, was out with the boys blasting a few clay pigeons. His wife Ethel was making up the cabins. No one knew that the compressor wheel was rubbing against a cardboard box full of empty oil cans, creating a lot of friction. The fire spread rapidly to the counter above, some new inner tubes caught ablaze. Mrs. Frick turned in the alarm. The truck responded promptly, minus the chief. Firemen extinguished the blaze, and exchange of telephone calls finally reached Chief Frick at the trap range. Three firemen, also at the chute, hopped into Frick's Cadillac. They burned up the pavement to North Las Vegas. The fire was out when Frick arrived home. Damage was estimated at about $75. 'Some days you can't make a nickel,' said Frick." Thank you.
Oh, Jeff, that was cute. You know, the Civic Center used to be called McDaniel Street when I lived here, so they did hail him, but we'll hear a little bit more later, I guess.
I think we still have McDaniel Street, don't we? I think there still is McDaniel Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have something else to report, sir?
Yep. Sorry, I want to thank Mr. Albert for that presentation. It reminds me of Winston Churchill, he said, the longer you can look back, the further forward you can see, and I think that as we experience kind of some of our history through his presentations, I think we see ourselves in it sometimes, we see both the progress that's been made, and then, you know, how much more we can do moving forward. It's, I just wanted to take a moment, I had some other things I was going to talk about, but as, as kind of listening to that, that item on, on the agenda and regarding the, my appointment, it was, it's kind of a unique experience, I wasn't sure if I should look back at people or not. It's humbling to both hear stakeholders, hear people in the community with their thoughts and their suggestions on things. It's been humbling over the last week to have friends and stakeholders that have reached out with different thoughts on things. It's always difficult, as you all are well aware, being in the public eye, it's difficult to read things sometimes that are either one side of the story, or fail to include many or most of the facts. I think that tomorrow's going to be a great event for the city with the State of the City address. I do believe that the city's heading in the right direction in many ways. It's, it's been a blessing for myself, as well as an extremely rewarding professional experience, to have been able to, to work on a plan to turn this community around, and be able to come into the city and work with each one of you, and with an incredibly talented staff, on, on turning the city around. It's both a professional thrill, as well as just a testament to the truly amazing people that we have that work in the city. There's, there's been a lot of turnover in the city, and we have some very talented people. I've been fortunate enough to have been a part of hiring many of the, of the people or working to, to, many of our directors, to, for them to be in the positions that they're in, and they're It's always been interesting for me over the years to talk with people in different communities, whether they're leaders in different communities or whether they're just people that professionally study communities, and for them to inquire about how we were able to succeed in many areas in North Las Vegas, given the difficulties that we were, the headwinds that we faced, and how we were able to do it. And it's both a testament to not just the people that work within the four corners of this building, but also our community, which is a resilient community that has shown a fortitude and a strength in being able to, they're fighters, and they share a background that I personally share with a family that also was a family of fighters that knew what it was like to earn your keep and to work hard. And so it's an honor for me to have both been a part of what we've done so far and to be working with this staff and with you all as we continue to move this city forward to, I think, the plateau and to the reaches that we all believe that it can go.
Thank you very much. Oh, that's your thing. Moving on to public forum, now's the time, set aside, to speak on any item you'd like to talk to us, that reports on the agenda or just whatever's on your mind. Council will take no action upon the matters being raised at public comment. I have three blue cards here. Mr. Richard, first.
Okay, I'm going to be quick. I got two important things I want to talk about, but finishing up on this thing with Ryan Juden here, and by the way, Ryan Juden and I have become really good friends, so I hope we're still friends after tonight. But I'm just being honest. We're in a situation where the city council didn't have a choice, but you, Mr. Mayor, put us in that situation by overstepping your boundaries as a mayor and firing a little Chinese girl. You're taking too many of your lessons from Mr. Trump.
You know, I'm not going to debate Mr.
And you people stood by and let him do this, including a woman who didn't take the side of another woman.
I wasn't even in town when this happened. I was celebrating Christmas.
Yeah, you're always innocent. You don't make mistakes.
I don't make mistakes when I don't make mistakes.
You, Mr. Trump, do not make mistakes.
Anyway, you go ahead, because your facts are always irrelevant.
Now, here's the other thing I'm worried about. All the union people love this guy. They're not supposed to love him. If he does his job right, they'll hate his guts. If I had been elected mayor, these unions would have hated me, because I would have stood up for the taxpayers. Your job, Mr. Barone, your job, Mr. Churchill, and Pamela Goines-Brown and Scott Black, your job is to represent the taxpayers, not the unions. The unions have highly-paid professionals. We have nothing. Now, let's talk about something really important. Last week, one young person died in the city, and the other one, last I heard, was in critical condition. It was in Mr. Churchill's part of town on the corner of Centennial Fifth. I went out there, I took pictures. I'll have pictures next time I come. We'll put them on the big screen. That was an accident, looking for a place to have it. No sidewalks. How many times have I been down here saying, we need sidewalks? Who walks the sidewalks? Young people on the way back and forth to school? Older people? People in wheelchairs? They're not being represented in this town either. This is a dangerous city. When are we going to do something about our kids and our elderly? There were no markings up there, there were no barricades, somebody didn't do their job. Who is in charge of public safety in this town? Is that a separate department? What is that?
I'll be in charge.
Because they're, I'm sorry, what?
I said, I'll be in charge.
You're going to be in charge of public safety?
I blame somebody, I'm going to be in charge.
I'm having trouble hearing you. We need to look into some of these things. We're not even through the first month, and two young people dead. Nobody has a problem with that? Richard, that's your area, isn't it? Did you go there? Did you see how dangerous that area is?
This is your open forum.
Yeah. Well, maybe you should meet me up there sometime. Have a good night. God bless.
Mr. Doug Dodden, are you still here? And Mr. Smith, Greg Smith, are you still here? Dave Leffler. And Ms. Nedra Cooper.
Hi, Mayor and councillor. I'm Nedra Cooper. I do live in North Las Vegas. I'm a member of the Las Vegas Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and I'm here because we are looking into doing a petition on stop the senseless shooting of unarmed citizens. And what I'd like to say today is, it was heartwarming to hear the collaboration between North Las Vegas Police Department and Metro. Chief Perez and Chief Labarno, get a round of applause. We stand on the principle that the rule of engagement needs to change, and to hear them talk in terms of going to a reality-based training, I am so inspired, because we are taking notes and we're going to keep watching. So we appreciate the fact that North Las Vegas is leading the fight to de-escalate situations where officers are using excessive force when they really don't have to. So that, I want to thank you for taking that charge, and if other cities would take a look at seriously understanding, we know that the rules of engagement for the officers is a lot different than what the public sees when we think of what a rule engagement should be. So I'm hoping that this reality-based training merges those two things so the public can get what they want from their protect and serve officers, and I do love our police force. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Your breath, appreciate it this evening. We are doing great things with the police community, and we appreciate the restraint that our department does show. Is anybody else that'd like to come up and address the council? Saying none, we'll close the public hearing, and this meeting is adjourned.